Hey! Can you guys hear me okay? Yes, okay. I feel like we're in an airplane and everybody's sitting in their seats, right? And you're waiting for the stewardess to come on and shut the door and you've just been waiting and you're looking at your phones and I'm about ready to come on and say hello, welcome to New Summit, or welcome to Southwest, or whatever, right? Because I think everybody was kind of waiting for us to do our thing. So, um, thank you and welcome to New Summit Charter Academy today. I'm Kim McClellan. I'm your fearless leader, executive director and principal. If I haven't met some of you, I've seen some faces, I recognize some faces from our information sessions and things, but thank you for coming on a Tuesday night. You'll notice some exciting things have already started happening in our building, but today has been a quite busy day for me, so I apologize that I wasn't able to meet and greet all of you at the door. I came from a district meeting right in here and so we're going from meeting to meeting. I was meeting with furniture people today, IT people, so things are moving fast and furious. So extend a little bit of grace today. I'm moving on to a new, shifting my brain to meeting now lots of families. So I just appreciate you being here. It's really exciting to see all of your faces. Um, I'm going to do a couple introductions. This is just our agenda today and we have a very tight schedule. So I'm going to be what I call time keeper. That's going to be very strong on time keeper. I know a lot of you have lots and lots of questions and hopefully we'll answer as many questions as we can in the time that we have allotted, but we'll be covering a lot of information tonight. So we would really appreciate if you would hold your questions until we have Q and A time. We may not be able to get to every single question, but as we go into breakouts and we, there may be some questions that will be answered in those breakouts as well, but we're going to kind of really stick with our agenda on a hard line so that you all can get out of here at 8 o'clock and then we'll have board members and myself lingering around afterwards to answer any other questions that you might have. Are we all good on that? All right, thumbs up. So tonight, um, we really will be covering everything from uniforms to traffic drive-through. We'll be covering building updates so you know what's happening with our building, enrollment updates. Of course, we're going to cover t-shirt sales because we want to sell our t-shirts. Um, and then we'll have some Q and A. That's our main session before you guys will be breaking out. The reason why we're doing breakout sessions is because not everybody's interested in preschool, but some are. Not everybody's interested in before and after school care, but some are. So we wanted to make sure that we gave time to make it valuable for you all in order to have that time one-on-one with, in a small group, okay? We do have some committee sign-ups that we'll be talking about very briefly, that if you're interested in volunteering, we'll have some committee sign-ups that we have at the back of the room. Um, and then our breakouts will be, and this is going to be hard stop too for those speakers, those of you who know your speakers, there's a hard stop at 20 minutes apiece. So you'll have three rounds, um, rotations and we'll talk about that here in a second, but you'll see that there's different breakout groups so that you can have those questions answered as well that you won't answer, that you won't ask in the main session, okay? But first I'd like to bring up Rick Van Weren. Rick has been such an integral leader of New Summit Charter Academy and I wanted him just to have a moment to speak and talk about a transition that he's going through right now so that you all would be on the same page and then I'll introduce the rest of our board that's here as well.
Hi, thanks, thank you all very much for being here tonight. So I've been, uh, on this board kind of from the beginning and I've been chair of it for the last, I don't know exactly how long it's, feels like three times longer than it probably really was. But anyway, um, I have had to step off the board in the last week because of a conflict of interest. And a conflict of interest can be a lot of things when you're on a public board and this is one of the best conflicts of interest that you could ever have. Uh, when we set out to do this school, we wanted it to be a school where any teacher that was worth their salt would practically kill to be here. And I'm married to a teacher and guess what happened? She wants to work here. I can't be on the board if she wants to work here. So she is pursuing employment and so I am not going to be president of the board here anymore. Uh, I am going to be a volunteer at the school though and I want to make sure everybody is aware that no matter what your situation, whether you're a spouse of a, of a teacher, a spouse of a principal, Lance has done his share already and continues to do so, or just a grandparent or anything, you're, everybody is welcome to help and we got lots of places for people to help. Our philosophy from the beginning on this thing has been next man up if anybody had to lead. And so Aaron Salt is the new board chair. He's been on the board for almost as long as I, well, not quite as long as I have, but he's been on the board for a long time too. He has been the vice chair and the treasurer as well and so he's intimately familiar with our budget. He's intimately familiar with everybody involved. And, um, I, everybody's going to be in great hands. I want to leave this thought with you though as parents. So everybody is going to need to take a turn at some point in using whatever gifts you've got. And I've got some gifts that I got a chance to use and we got a school and this is all good. It's time for people who have different gifts to step up now. And so, um, I'm just going to encourage all of you as parents to think about where your gifts are and get ready to go to work because there's a lot to do. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, let's give him a big round. All right, so, um, to stay on schedule, we have Aaron Salt, who's our board chair. He'll get to do Q and A here in just a, in a little bit. He's so excited about it. Um, Eric Davis. Eric Davis is our vice chair and treasurer right now. He just accepted the big position of that this last week at our board meeting. Anthony Bachman, he's our fearless furniture mover, everything else. His beautiful wife Brooke over here, she's like, Kim, stop. Um, they have some kids who are coming here. Eric also has, is a parent and hopefully someday, um, Aaron will be a parent as well. He's got little ones. And then we have Ted Nisha. Ted is, um, one of our board of directors as well, very much involved in the community. Um, he's just been a huge part of this. We're really excited about developing our constitution of New Summit here, um, coming up soon and he's going to be a wealth of knowledge for that. He's very passionate about that. And then we have Jennifer Rysig. Jennifer is our board secretary. Everybody knows Jennifer because she's always communicating with all of you with enrollments and things as well. So just very excited to have such an amazing board and very, very blessed to have them as my bosses. So, um, all right, so we're going to move into just some important updates. First one, how many of you have been waiting to hear about uniforms? No, really? I couldn't tell on Facebook. I just couldn't tell at all that we're really passionate about that. So we do have a draft and if I could get a couple helpers to pass out, um, if you need us, um, if you need a sensory uniform policy, please raise your hand first for sensory needs, um, because we have one for both. So, um, they'll just kind of come around, but we do have one for sensory needs so that we make sure that we're, um, being sensitive, isn't that funny, sensitive to that? So, um, as that's being passed out, can I just have one of those really quick, please? Wait, she has one right here. Nevermind. That's okay. I didn't practice this presentation before, so bear with me. All right, so we're going to have some Vanna Whites. Um, let's see, I'm going to call on, um, let me find somebody who, Holly, can you come up and be Vanna White, please? For me? We were going to try to do like a really fun hip like fashion show. That didn't work. I'm really sorry. We'll have to do a fashion show later, but don't worry, you're not going to be in a fashion show, so you're good. So right over here. So this is just a draft right now. This has to still be approved by the board, but this gives you, for those of you who are wanting to get in on the, um, deals that I think are happening on North Springs Mamas and there's lots of trades going on and there's sales going on, all those kinds of things. We wanted to make sure that you had a draft of what our policies, um, policy is going to look like for this next year. It's not going to change drastically if the board decided, Kim, why did you have pink shirts? I highly doubt they're going to ask me why I decided to have light pink shirts. So, um, just know that even though this is drafted, it's pretty, it's about 90% solidified. It would be drastic if somebody said, Eric said, Kim, I want plaid. We don't have plaid on here. So, um, he would be overruled. Sorry, Eric. So these are pictures. The pictures on here are examples only, okay? They are not the end-all be-all. So you can, just gives an example. You can utilize Walmart, any department store, um, Lands' End. We have, and I don't know if that parent's here, if he is, I would love to meet him because, um, he owns a uniform store. Are you here? You own Uniform Place? He's not here, but he might be on Facebook. Hi! Um, we have Facebook Live. Hi, all Facebook Live people. I forgot to say hi to you. Um, so we're going to give a link, like links to other providers that you guys can use once we do the final draft, but we just didn't have all the links in time, okay? So really this is flexible. You'll notice as we're holding up first, the shirts, we are allowing all polos and Peter Pan polos. Peter Pan polos are, I feel like I'm wrapping. Um, Peter Pan polos are the curved ones for girls that have even somewhat of the little lace on the end too. So Peter Pan polos are okay. You can kind of see, yep, they, and well, that was not really curved, but it has some lace on the end and that's okay. A little bit of embellishment on the bottom, not picky about it, okay? So polos in all colors, let's hold up the colors. We have navy blue. It's classic navy, okay? We have gray. I was so excited. There was a parent here the other day, trying to remember which parent, and we were talking about colors and they wanted gray sweaters and I was like, well, let's do gray, let's do gray shirts too. So gray, white. I never use white, just to let you know when my kids are in school. Bad choice, but some people like white to go under jumpers and stuff, okay? Um, notice now, I want to point something out. All these shirts have like, um, New Summit on them. You don't have to have New Summit on them. That's just what Lands' End thought that they'd be cute when we wanted to do this and put our name on our polos. So I thought that was nice. Um, light blue, we do not have an example of light blue, but I think we all know light blue. Light pink specifically, not hot pink, not pink, light pink. Okay, so this is a specific color that if you were buying this somewhere else, I would like you to color match that with us and it'll always be in the office, or you can purchase that from Lands' End because they have the correct light pink. And drum roll please, I'm so excited about this, teal. Because that's like our school color. It's one of our school colors. So, and it looks so great with navy, doesn't it? Yes. Okay. So those are the school colors. These are the colors that you can use, okay? Um, I put some specifics on here with the light pink and teal. Buttons are not required, so for some kids who don't like buttons and they get really frustrated with buttons, that one has no buttons. Now, but here's the thing, if girls tend to, it's going to, like, there was some concern that the ones with no buttons won't come down too far. If you as parents see that the cleavage is showing a little bit too much, this is another reason why we don't have kids here today, and then please put a tank top underneath their shirts, okay? Some girls are a little bit more bustier. I can't believe I'm saying this on Facebook Live, but we need to make sure that there is a tank top, that we use discretion on that, okay? Um, so buttons are not required on polos or Peter Pan shirts. Button-up shirts are acceptable in light blue and white only. And you'll see those on a lot of the uniform stores, they'll have the button-up, like nice, um, button-up shirts. Those are acceptable, but only in white, blue and white, okay?
Oxford shirts.
Oxford shirts, yes, thank you. Thank you, Vanna. Um, undergarments should not be visible. Self-explanatory, moving on. Any material or blend may be used for shirts with the exception of denim. No sheer shirts like what I'm wearing. It's not really sheer, I know, but it's somewhat, because I have to put a tank top or something underneath it. Um, or spandex, okay, so no spandex shirts. Um, shirts must be tucked in. Shirts must be tucked in, but they do not have to have a belt, because I know that there's some situations where some of the pants that will be purchased are elastic and don't have a belt, loops. If you have belt loops, try to teach your kids to use the belts. It's, it looks better. I would prefer to have belts, but I'm not going to die on that mountain, okay? And it's also not fair that like the girls get to wear these cute skirts with no belts, right? So I'm kind of looking at fair, even though fair isn't always equal or just, I'm not going to die on that mountain. Now we're losing. They don't want me to do this. Hello?
Bluetooth pairing.
Why is it pairing a Bluetooth? All right, can you still hear me? All right, so but shorts must be tucked in to everything, okay? So I might be tucked in shirt, principal going tucking your shirt, okay? Um, shirts must be worn under jumpers, so they can't just wear the jumpers, um, with sleeveless. So there are sleeveless jumpers, but they need to have a shirt under the jumper. Turtlenecks, um, in navy gray and any of those school colors, okay? Self-explanatory. Sweaters and sweatshirts. Sweatshirts may not have a hoodie. I, I, no hoodies. They're like playground nightmares. They are strangling kids and I don't want to have to worry about that. So no hoodies. They can wear hats on cold days, but the hats will have to come out as soon as they come in, so no caps, and that's in the accessory part. Um, you can do vests, you can do cardigans, but they all have to be within these colors and we give you some examples. Um, Eric, can you keep me on time? And, yep, what time is it? Okay, I'm going to breeze through some, some more of this. Pants, navy and khaki only, no black, no jeans. We're holding them up. Shorts, skirts, scorts, jumpers and capris are acceptable, because I know that some kids just wear high-waters and they become capris. Right? They get, these boys, man, they just are getting taller and taller and moms are like, really? I have to buy another pair of pants? Well, if they become capris for a boy, so be it, it's okay. Just may want to make sure he has good socks. Shorts and scorts and jumpers, skirts must be two finger. Now, my daughter has the longest swimmer arms known to man and she, when she puts things down and she's got these long legs and so typical shorts, you know, the two fingers above the knee, it needs to just be so that, let's be real, how many of us have seen girls with the shorts and their booties are hanging out? We're not doing that here. We don't want kids bending over, girls bending over with, um, skirt, with, um, skirt, with skirts and not have shorts underneath where we're seeing something. So just make sure that they're long enough, use good judgment there. They're walking out of the house with them a little too short because they've gotten taller, just change the shorts. Um, and then dresses the same. Just make sure that the dresses are long enough for them to be able to bend over and not be showing their cute little tissues. Leggings and tights. Ankle leggings may be worn under skirts and jumpers only, but not by themselves, okay? My daughters would have a night, they'd be like, oh my gosh, I can't wear stretch pants? No, no stretch pants. Um, but they can be worn under your skirts. Um, leggings should be navy or black only, okay? So that's when we can bring in black because there's a lot of black leggings that can be, um, covered up for the, for the girls. Um, tights may be worn under skirts or jumpers and socks are navy or white only. And those are so cute, by the way, moms, with the pink shirt and navy blue jumper and the little white knee-high socks, it's so cute. So yes, I had two girls in the charter school and it was so much fun. Hence why I have light pink. I loved light pink for them. Um, tennis shoes, boots, dress shoes and brown, black or white only. Please no hot pink shoes, um, black Nikes, you know, tennis shoes are fine, but, um, we can't have bright neon green Nikes. So tennis shoes need to be white, black or brown only. Same with the boots, okay? Um, tennis shoes may not be blinged or alighted and make squeaky noises. How many of you guys seen those, like squeak, 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 squeak? It's a little annoying. Heelys are not allowed. Flip-flops, beach shoes, swim shoes, shower shoes. Why they would bring shower shoes to school, I have no idea, but apparently they do. Um, and accessories. Girls may wear hair accessories that match the uniform colors, so pink, teal bows, red bows, those kinds of things. They can wear bows, um, hair ties with that. Thank you. Uh, no hats may be worn in the classroom, only on winter days. Earring piercings can be, they can have earrings pierced, but no gauges, no, um, nose rings, no tongue rings, nothing like that. Um, visible tattoos and body art are prohibited, so if they have, if a student does have a tattoo on their arm in third grade, then, um, please just make sure that they're wearing that long sleeve of Oxford. I don't know these days, right? Um, and spirit days. So we can veer from this when we have some spirit days and kids can wear jeans, but they won't be holy, which is a bummer for me. I love my boyfriend jeans that are like holy. Like, they're so cute and stylish, but I won't be able to. So, um, just make sure that, um, you use judgment on that and we'll give background and, um, parameters on that when we do have spirit days, okay? Uniform, I'm not going to take time for questions at the moment because I want to move on with the agenda, but if you're brewing some questions, think about those during Q and A time. Um, but at the end of the day, please use just good judgment. We'll have more information on the types of providers that we'll use and...
And if there's kids with sensory issues, the, the guide is on the shelf thing.
Okay, so if you're...
If you just sit back.
Okay.
If you happen to have students that have sensory issues, one of our parents has gone and done the research before you and has found a clothing line that has like stuff for the kids that just struggle with like seams in their pants or, um, certain materials that they struggle with. So there is a guide, um, backed by Anthony, who has a green shirt on back there, right by the door. There's a box right next to him that has that guide for you if you need the sensory and it has the website that you guys can order from.
Can you turn off that light back there, please? Aaron, thank you. There we go. Okay, rolling right into traffic. This is not final either. It has not been approved by the city, but we have submitted it to the city and, um, there's a few changes that they're going to have us make. We have three drop-off areas that we're proposing. Again, all of this is proposed. There may be changes. And as we have said on our, um, traffic is that drop-off and pickup builds...
So carpool...
Carpool.
Does not build character. It, what did I say? Carpool does not build character, but it brings character out.
I just love that. So if you're used to being on your phone during carpool, just don't do it, because this, the first that I will tell you right now, the first two weeks of school are the most dangerous time of school, because people are out of their routine and so we're going to be very vigilant and I know these families that I'm looking at right now, everybody's going to be very vigilant. We're going to have smiles on our face. We're going to be, give, extend lots and lots of grace and when you're smiling, coming through the carpool because you've waited for 20 minutes, you're still going to smile and wave at me, right? Because you know that we've done the best we possibly can, because we love your kids and we want to make sure that they're safe and we've dealt with many, many, many questions with the city and the district, okay? That's what I've been, I've been getting all those arrows, okay? For you to make sure your kids are safe. So following directions will be very, we're going to have a really cool video in the beginning of the year that you can watch and we'll have lots of information so that you understand it. But in a nutshell, kindergarten will be down here, okay? First and third grade will be in the upper lot and fourth through sixth grade will be in the Xfinity Center, proposed. If you have kids like, well, I have a kindergartner and a fourth right here, where do I go? We will figure that out, but more than likely you'll come down here with your kindergartner because the kindergartner's close right by their school, okay? And it's better that they're getting the better, you know, this drop-off and they don't have to walk as far. So just, we're going to, we'll give you some scenarios with that. I also want to thank Amanda Roderick, if you raise, raise your hand back there. She's been, she's a volunteer parent who's really helped us with this process. She used to work in the Department of Transportation, so like, see, Rick was talking about strengths. Our parents have so many different strengths that are so helpful, so, um, but they're going to, the drive-throughs you will not be making, and I can't come over here, so I'm going to try to go like this, like I'm bringing my suitcase over here. Um, people will not be able to make a left-hand turn here. So if you live over here, I'm sorry, you're going to have to come down, figure out a different way to go around, because right here along Lexington is where the stacking would happen and there is, you're going to turn right, you're going to turn right in, come around and this area right here is drop-off, okay? And then come out and you can only take a right out, you won't be able to take a left, assuming the state said, I mean, the city says that's a pay for kindergarten drop-off area. Up top. I need a wireless. We didn't add that, Aaron, on our IT things. Can we add that?
Budget guy.
Budget guy, can I have a wireless mic, please? Um, so over here, you're going to still, stacking will come along Meadow Bridge here. You'll turn right into this upper lot, come around. This is changed a little bit because, and Amanda, am I right, that drop-off is up a little bit further, right? Okay. So drop-off is up a little bit further here. You'll come out and take a right out. Notice, always use good judgment of right, 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 okay? Never a left. Never a left. Everybody repeat, never a left. Okay, good. All right, next. The next, the next one. This is going to be hard to see and I apologize. Um, you'll see over here too, again, coming in right, coming around, drop-off, come out and then you'll come down and you'll go to Bordeaux and you'll go about your business in your day, okay? Up top here, it's a right in, come down, there's going to be a lot of stacking in here. It's going to come around, loop up, loop back down, drop-off, so there'll be two drop-offs here. Come out, you'll pass other cars that are coming in to come up and turn right out. We needed this area for a lot of stacking because the city is like, you can only have an X amount of cars stacking on Lexington, because they're very concerned about that. I will say, for full transparency sake, we've been asked to possibly change our start time, but I'm pushing back pretty hard on that because I don't want to start school at 9 o'clock. Um, so it's because of, um, we're within a half hour of the high school, but we're within 15 minutes of Frontier over here and a lot of cars are going to be coming out the same way. So that's where I'm going to ask for, I don't know, I will do my best to not, and so I just want to let you guys know that that's where maybe some grace will need to be as well. So I am working very hard to continue with our eight to three, um, timeframe and we won't, we may end up with a stagger for kindergarten where if they require us to say, okay, kindergarten would start at 8:15, I mean, at, yeah, at 8:15 instead of 8, so that we have more stacking for the other grade levels, but I don't like that because a lot of families have kindergartners that have second graders and it just doesn't make any sense. So, um, there's our proposed, I say that very strongly, proposed, um, traffic pattern. We're blessed to have three drop-off areas, by the way. Most schools only have that one. Um, I do not know process yet of if you're going to have a number outside of your car or if you're going to have, we're going to call kids, that monster, I have to wait to do this first, okay? So, um, if you are, you love to do that kind of planning and want to help me with that, some of you are gifted in that kind of planning, I would 100% accept your help in that area, okay?
Can kids walk to school?
Oh, good question on Facebook, yes, kids can walk to school. We will have a crosswalk. Do you remember where they were going to put the crosswalk, Amanda? Where they were proposing that? Where they were proposing that? Okay. Okay. So, there is going to be a crosswalk and I believe we will have a crossing guard, but kids are not going to have to walk down until they're in comeback. You can also, some families may want to park over in Ford Frick Park and then walk their kids across. You're welcome to do that too, but we'll have some kind of crossing guard that's coming across here so that you're staying on sidewalks for, for drop-off. Bicycles? Bicycles. Haven't thought of that. Thank you. See? Full transparency, working on it, working on it. Okay. So, bicycles, may need a bicycle rack. Got it, check. Budget man, check. Okay. All right, so moving on to our agenda. Building updates. Oh, this one's my favorite, you guys. Okay. I just got today, the most updated plans. All done. Can you kind of move around from, oh, hello? It's not working again. Jen, can you come move around for me, like move them out?
Bluetooth.
Okay. So, these, just to let you know, are the most up-to-date... Hello? There we go. These are the most up-to-date plans that we got at 1:30 today and I, they got sent to the printer and I didn't get time to get the big huge print, so, we'll be getting those and we'll post those on the windows here in the next day or two. So, this is the most up-to-date, what's being submitted to the city. And as you can see, they started demo today. Everybody give me a big hooray! Did you guys see me on, yes, yes, it's like huge because every day I was coming and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, why is there no demo happening yet?" But, today they did and I even got to hit, I got to like actually use that sledgehammer and hit a wall. It was so much fun. And it got stuck. So, when you come in, there'll still be a vestibule here, reception right at the front, so for security sake, go ahead and come up here.
Do I use the air horn or just kind of go with the fingers? Two fingers.
Come on, you're a Mac person.
I'm trying to. Okay, it's not working. Two fingers, so, two fingers.
Two fingers. Okay. So, kindergarten classrooms, 6 kindergarten classrooms. There will be a 7th that will be a 1st grade classroom that we're using for this next year, okay? You'll see, as you kind of look over there, you can kind of see the hole when you walk by today. There's a hole in the door, in the 1st and kindergarten and 1st grade area that actually is like the hallway because all this is still a wall. They didn't demo that wall because it's part of the wall. So, that stays the same. Oh, and then, all of the offices are here. The principal's office is right here or here, we'll decide, so we hope that you never have to come there, okay? Nurse's office is here for all of your sick babies and then we have a conference room slash business manager here, but this whole area here is going to be our office right next to kindergarten. Okay, 1st grade is still here. We have 6 1st grade classrooms, but a couple of them will be 2nd grade next year. Remember, we're not building out this side over here this next year. We have still a couple breakout rooms for... We have a couple breakout rooms that are still going to stay for literacy breakouts, special education breakouts, gifted and talented breakouts, so this will be some of those areas or office space. We have our custodian closet, teacher's lounge, copy room.
Nice job, Jen. You could do it.
And Erin's over there. See, I told you, Apple. We were having a debate about Apple versus Windows tonight. I mean, PC. Breakout rooms, copy rooms, all of this right here, you'll notice that there's a teacher's lounge, so there's going to be a wall where you guys go into the bathroom right now and then there'll be outside entrances for the bathrooms, for the girls' and boys' bathroom. And then we'll have one staff bathroom down below for next year and then the next year they'll build another staff bathroom down below. So, that was one small change. Nothing's changing with the multipurpose room. That's all staying the same. And then here, we'll still have a library, but it'll be a very open library this next year and all of these offices are going to stay the same right now except for that back one is going to be a big conference room. This guy's like, "Oh, my gosh, all these people are staring at me." He's like, "Come on, come on, there you go, show us what the..." There we go. And then, right over here, it's going to be another conference space. So, we have 3 conference rooms, which is great. Okay, moving on to the next level. Okay. 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th will all be upstairs except for a couple. What happened?
I have an issue.
2nd, there'll be 2 2nd, a couple 2nd grade classrooms that will be downstairs and a couple that will be upstairs only because of space, because we're not building the space out again. So, all those classrooms will stay the same up top that we talked about in the tours. Oh, this is not it. Nope. That was the wrong one. There it is. Okay. So, classrooms, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, we have a hallway. I believe there will be glass coming up to a certain point in the wall so that there's natural light that's still coming in. I did talk to the architect about that to make sure that we're having as many rooms as possible with natural light because this building has such beautiful space with natural light. We have another conference room up here, a couple breakout rooms, moving over here.
Yep, go like that. There we go. Doesn't like my fingers.
More breakout. Right here, this room right here is our Spanish room. That needed to be added because it wasn't on the original plans. So, we do have a Spanish room and then another break room, bathrooms. Okay, here's the change, the only change, but don't fret, okay? I'm not. Is that art and music will not be done next year. However, we're still going to use the space for art and music. It just won't have the exact configuration of art and music next year. We're still going to have risers, so what I'm looking at is the 7th and 8th grade area that's proposed to be 7th and 8th grade will have music in there and art in where music is, where you guys would go out if you were on the tour, you'd go out and go into the gymnasium. So, we're still going to offer and we're going to have like these big humongous spaces that they're going to miss then the next year because they won't have that humongous space because we'll be building 7th and 8th grade classrooms. So, it's not art on a cart, it's still art, we just won't be able to do the kiln yet because we don't have the room for the kiln and the flute and stuff like that, so, but that will happen in the next year. We just, because of the amount of bathroom work that we had to do, bathrooms cost a lot, a lot of money. Because of that, we had to forego on just a couple things and so, I said, "You know what? Let's build the Spanish room. Let's not go ahead and do that because we can still have that space, because we still have access to that space." No big deal, right? We're good. Still offering all the same programming, it doesn't change any of that. So, there's your building update. Yay! Okay. You got a nice tour of the school. We will be posting these plans when I get the final, like plans with the names inside of the rooms and stuff. We'll post these on the website, post them on Facebook so people can kind of get an idea and see what's happening with that, okay? Okay. We met with furniture people today too, by the way, and it's going to be so much fun even doing furniture and we're, we're just having a lot of fun. I was already picturing like some of the seating. We're going to do varied seating for kids, so we have, you know, the movers and shakers that love to move all the time, that's me. They get, you know, we're going to have some specific seats for them, kids who like to stand, so we'll have, seating is very key when doing furniture for schools, so we're going to be really thinking about that because a table's a table, but the seating is what's really important, looking at posture and making sure that kids are being able to utilize that, which is great.
Did you show preschool on...
Oh, preschool, I did show preschool. Oh, my gosh. Terry's like, "Kim, where's preschool?" Because Terry's here. Okay, let me show you preschool really fast. Okay. Here is preschool. We have 3 classrooms for preschool with a bathroom in each one. They have some office space and then this whole area is like considered activity room, but we're working with the preschool group right now because they only need 2,500 square feet, so we may end up taking in some of that space ourselves as space for us to use as a school, so. But, they are plumbing in, I believe, another area for a 4th classroom if we did an expansion with preschool for a 4th classroom later on, so. Okay? Good question. All right. Enrollment update, Jen. Are we on time? Are we on time?
6:00.
Okay. So, first I'm going to say thank you so much for going through the enrollment process, going down to the district and enrolling. I know for some people it was a confusing process and, but thank you. Thank you so much for following that for us. So, here is where we are on enrollment. We currently have 139 kindergartners. We have... Yay! All those babies, I can't wait! We are at full capacity for 2nd grade at, no, no, 1st grade at 66. We have, we still have room in 2nd grade, we're opening a 3rd. We have a 3rd class that we can still fill, so we have 13 spots there. Also, for 3rd grade, we still have 13 spots to fill 75 seats. 4th grade, we have 2 classes, our full in 4th grade, so we have 50 students and then 5th grade, we have, I can't remember how many spots left in 5th grade, but we will have 3 classes of 5th grade to equal 75 students and 6th grade we are at, our full at 50 students. So, we're doing a great job, so we still have some seats we can fill, but I just, again, I'm going to thank you so much. So, yeah, I know we get that 5:31, just as another side note, if you're listening on Facebook and any families in here, if your student has an IEP that you have not given to our school, we do need you to send us the, excuse me, any 504s, healthcare plans or IEPs need to be emailed to me so that I can forward them to Cindy. Cindy, stand up. She's our special ed resource teacher. Yay, Cindy! So, we need those because a lot of families, I know we had, they indicated that they have an IEP, but we don't have them and I know the district when you enrolled said, "Oh, you don't need to submit those, we'll get those later." We need them now. So, we're just beginning to review those IEPs and then we'll, we'll be setting up transition meetings for that. So, she'll talk about that a little bit more in the IEP breakout, but we do need IEPs for out-of-district and in-district students. They just need to be scanned and emailed to me directly and we'll post that on the website or Facebook with my email address, but it's easy, principal.newsummit@gmail.com, okay? I just had to make sure that was a change that when I was meeting before this, we need to make sure we have that, so. Okay, t-shirt sales. This will be easy so I can make up time because we are 3 minutes behind schedule. T-shirt sales will be out front here because we're all official, so you can like wear your t-shirts proudly, your New Summit t-shirts. You can be like Rick, he likes to wear them over his polos and Oxford, Oxords. So, don't hesitate, we have lots of t-shirts still to sell and so make sure you do that. The money does go to us to help doing some activities for the summer and putting that into our marketing budget, which we are using widely, so just thank you. If you want to buy a t-shirt today, feel free to do so. And same with on Facebook, you can purchase it online and we'll make sure you get it. Now, for Q and A. Erin and I get to do this one together.
How am I doing on uniform? I got the light pink, the gray, the blue.
I'm so excited! Look at, he's like, he's like, "I thought somebody came for the fashion show. I thought I was in the fashion show."
I didn't get the cancellation email, so...
Look, can we even have brown shoes?
Just no socks, so...
I don't know, we didn't do anything about beards, though.
If your 3rd grader has a beard, it'll be accepted.
Nice job, nice job. All right, so, we're going to spend, Erin, keep us on time for about 8 minutes so that we can make up some time on Q and A. Only specifically for what we've covered, you'll know, okay? That we're covering preschool, before and after-school care, curriculum questions and special education and literacy will be covered in our breakout session. So, if you have questions about the building, drop-off, uniform, or miscellaneous that we maybe don't know about, that we need to be aware of, let us know. And so, let's start with a Facebook question first.
Student-teacher ratio?
Student-teacher ratio is 20 to 1 in kindergarten and let's see if Erin knows this, 20...
22 to 1 in 1st and 25 to 1 2nd and above.
This is great. Nice job. Okay, next question.
I have 2 quick ones. The rest of the construction that you said is going to be completed next year, will any of that occur while the students are in school or would it resume during summer?
Great question. Any, her question was, and I just went out. Hello? Nope, we're not.
Bluetooth, Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Building construction will not happen when kids are here, it will happen in the summertime or during breaks.
Perfect. Second question, when we did our first walkthrough, they had mentioned that you guys were looking at possibly a small outdoor playground, the kids aren't in school all day. We know they have an indoor gym that they can go to, but have you guys looked into that at all, if the kids have some outdoor things?
So, I get to be this guy, right? Playground equipment is really expensive and we don't have a lot of funding for that right now. We're working on a couple grants that would help cover the cost of the playground, so it kind of depends on how that goes. In the future, we would love to have one, but it kind of depends on how our funding rolls for the first year.
Would they be able to go to the park at all? That was one I think they had mentioned in the walkthrough.
So, we will be, we're looking at doing some permitting with the city on that and we do have a small amount of budget in our startup grant for playground, but it's not going to be a lot, so we will be utilizing a little bit of that money depending on the cost of the playground equipment, so completely piggybacking on what Erin said. We put it into the grant, but it's not going to be enough for like what we have, but we do know there's a lot of Facebook posts that are going out there for playground grants that if you get so many likes, then you can get some free playground equipment, so we're working through that. So, we will have more playground updates on exactly what we can purchase because we've got to look at the actual finances and what these bids are coming back at. So, we may have some equipment, but it's not going to be, it's going to phase year after year.
Can I get something to playground?
Yeah.
I don't know if this is already said to you, but, but as we're looking at the playground, we also know that we'll get balls for the kids, so they might be on some junk road chalk, I mean, just seeing kids running around getting fresh air. So, have no fear about the playground. I have a kindergartner as well that'll be here and she was like, "Mom, where am I going to play?" I'm like, "You get to be outside." So, there's so many great things about being outside that can, I mean, the playground equipment isn't the end-all-be-all we want. Playground equipment, yes, yes, we do and we love writing grants, don't we, Kim? Trying to get playground equipment. So, just be patient with us as we're trying to pursue all these questions.
She couldn't have said it better because it's just, it may not, like, we may even still be doing with the playground equipment that we do get to buy because bids come back less than we thought. The landscapers may still be doing, building it because we have to do permitting and lots of things with the city, so. Yes.
Do you remember, we, another time that if you had enrolled in full-time or part-time, that wouldn't necessarily happen for you, would you be able to have what that would be?
She's my enrollment lady. So, pretty much what that form was for is because we have had some parents who have...
So pretty much with that form was words, because we have had some parents who have been doing whatever, um, that have switched their preference, and so we have to take a good look at that. For the most part, you will get your preference, but we have a ton of AM kindergartners, a ton of them, and there may be some that we do have to put in PM, because we don't have the space for that. And then it'll also shift too, as the summer goes on and families move, so don't, don't lose heart that you're not, you're not going to get your choice, most likely, almost, almost positive that you will, but just be a little bit flexible, especially if you're in the half-day program, because, um, if we have, if we're oversubscribed, we can't go, we can't, um, go over our 20 students per classroom. So just know, if you have the AM, we're gonna try, try to do our best to accommodate you, um, but some of you, we might have to ask if you can go with the PM, just because of our numbers, and because that's our largest grade. Um, so, we have the seven classes of kindergarten, um, and so, that's a lot to work with. Does that help?
Yeah, if you signed up for four days, though.
You're...
Or is that something that probably would happen?
Yes. Yeah, we're not, we, how our numbers broke down, we're not one step away from that.
Oh, can I have that one? Yeah, yeah.
Cool. If you have not filled out that form...
You need to.
You need to.
Yes.
We might be put in the position where we have to decide for you, so if you have not filled it out, it should be in your inbox, um, to please fill that. Okay, Facebook's question.
So many people want to know about security.
Security, okay. I want him to start.
So, security is an issue that's obvious in the front of everybody's mind, and by no means is it outside. We have been taking a lot of time as a board to evaluate what our policies and stuff look like. Um, we brought in a risk manage...
Ready? There it goes.
We brought in a risk management company who's gone through and looked, and we were looking at some other programs that will sort of do, uh, a look through the building to see where there's vulnerabilities and where we need to enhance security. So we'll have cameras that are kinda posted around to make sure that we can have a, a 360 view around the building of what's going on. Um, as Kim was showing during the plans, we'll have sort of reception area that will prevent people from coming in without being authorized to come in. Um, I don't know what else.
Um, we're working with the district.
We're working with the district right now. We're actually gonna be contracting security with the district for year one, and so we're working really, uh, closely with their security officers. We've got some, some time scheduled, I think, in the near, next couple weeks, where we'll be sitting down with them to go through, um, our security plan, their requirements, and what they can do for us. So it's something that we are taking a lot of time and being very strategic and methodical on our approach.
I have a question for that.
Say it really loud. Okay.
You guys are gonna have, like, three different drop-off areas and three different entrances to the school, for instance, and you're gonna, they're gonna focus on all those three areas? Are you seeing this?
Mm-hmm. All right. So she was... She was wondering, we're gonna have three different areas where kids are gonna be brought into, and so she's just curious if they're gonna all come in one door, or if they're gonna all come into three different, they'll have different strategic doors that they're coming in, and they'll be manned by staff as well, so that people can't just, like, come in. Okay. And then I'll get you right back there.
Okay, odd question, socks for uniform for boys, is it the same, the white and the navy?
White and navy, are you wondering?
No gray. Boys' socks tend to come in packs of black, gray.
Um, great question, and I'm really glad you brought that up, so those are, that's why this is a draft, and I hadn't even thought of that, so, black and gray seems fine to me. I just don't want neon hot pink, or neon, like, a bunch of stripes, so, yeah, that's fine. We'll make an additional change to that as well. Thank you, good. In the back? Winter coats may have hoods. Um, you said navy, blue shoes, no, we're gonna do white, black, and brown. Um, and you, what was your other, I couldn't hear you.
Belt color.
Belt color, brown and black. Good question, we need to make sure we add that. See why we did this as a draft? Yes. Does it say on there, black? Okay, it does, okay, good. All right, right here.
Will they have lockers?
They will not have lockers, right now. Not until it depends on space. So right now, this next year, they will not have lockers. Okay? Right here? They'll have big cubbies, though. We have really big cubbies in places where they're gonna put their stuff. Cubs.
They'll have to carry everything with them for every class.
Well, they're, they're not switching this next year. So in junior high, if then they start switching, they would, yeah, so, good question. Good clarification. Yes.
With having such a large kindergarten population, are there plans in place to evaluate the number of grade classes, to know that you have six kindergartners?
Called our bubble?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A bubble, how can you handle that?
So, um, there, that, just for Facebook, there was a question about with all of our kindergartners, do we have plans to help our grade level bubble?
Yes.
Love how simple he is. Yes, the board has taken very, we've looked at that, and we've done lots of, um, figuring with that, and because of the class sizes and attrition, our, um, numbers are fine. Because, so we're gonna be, stay hard to four, it would be six, six first grade, six kindergarten next year, six first grade, six second grade. Yes, I think? I'm trying to picture the plans. Um, four third grade, four fourth, four fifth, four sixth, four seventh, four eighth, so, and so on. Okay? Um, in the back, right, yeah, right there. Either one, well, either one, you guys pick, you do get out. No, I'm just kidding. No. Not gonna get that picky. Okay? Just no Mohawks. Before Erin got a haircut, his was pretty long. Um, and if you can, if they're in a ponytail, but they're not, like, crazy, we just need to use, um, good judgment, but I just don't want any Mohawks. Hair color, oh, and hair color, um, they, it needs to be, they can have highlights, because I have highlights, but no orange, pink, except for on spirit days, blues, things like that. Um, in the very, very back, hi! So, we'll talk more about shoes, but like, I have black Nike kinda shoes that I can wear, um, I just didn't, we're needing to use judgment on, like, there's brown Oxford's, like, he's wearing brown Oxford's, and like, the black dress shoes, um, that are nicer, that you can get, like, at BASH. Um, so, we'll talk more about, if there's some bigger concerns about shoes specifically, we can think about that, and we can bring some of that, so bring some of your concerns to me, and, um, I'll work with my uniform committee, and then I'll work with the board on some compromise with that, okay? I'm always open to a compromise. Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Are you with the star shirt?
Yeah.
Two quick questions. Can they wear long-sleeved polos?
Yes.
Yes.
Long-sleeved polos on Facebook Live, yes.
And then, um, is there a specific age where we can start to self-apply, walk across the street by themselves? Do they have to be, like, seven, eight to walk across and be applying?
Um, why don't we discuss that with the board of safety?
We'll discuss that with, uh, some of our safety policies, and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Nail polish and jewelry.
Will you send that email, will you send that to me, though? Yeah. Please, okay, good.
Nail polish and jewelry with uniforms.
Great questions. Nail polish, school colors. Um, I'm going off the teal.
Light pink.
Light pink. Teal. Maybe blue. Um, nail polish is fine with me, I, maybe school colors, um, that'd be an accessory, maybe. And then, um, jewelry, let me, let me think about that. I, let me work with my committee and the board on that one. Let me do some research.
This is along the same lines as the accessories, and you said they need matching uniforms. My daughter has a thing of kitty ear headbands, are they gonna be?
Yeah, no, sorry, yeah. They could, she can have a pink headband.
Right, but not the pink, too, you're...
No, no, sorry.
Can you relate to that, the feature? Will you say not sweatpants and money?
No sweatpants. There, um, no sweatpants, no, it has to be like the, or on the Century page, yeah. Okay, we're seven o'clock. Um, no kitty ears. There was a kitty ears, there's...
Like the headbands.
Like the headbands with, like, things, unless it's a spirit day, we might be able to do something with that, so. And then there was a question about, um, sweatpants and things like that, we, we can't do that.
She was asking about some of those for P.E.
Oh, P.E., no, because they won't be doing a P.E. uniform, with that.
And there's no place to change.
And there's no place to change, so we can't do that, so. Okay, it's seven o'clock, and so for time's sake, if you have other questions specifically that you're burning to ask, um, make sure you just grab me afterwards, or always feel free to email any of us, um, questions, um, we're more than happy to answer those questions. So let me talk about the explanation of breakouts.
I know where they are, so who, and do you remember?
Okay, actually, do you wanna just do that? So, let me just talk process. We have preschool, and, let's see, Bruce and Terry, would you guys stand up?
They actually...
Oh, they probably, they already went upstairs, okay. So Bruce and Terry are from, um, Diakonia, they're the group that we are pretty close to going into a contract with them, so there's a couple details we need to work out, but I wanted them to be here to represent, um, preschool, and talk about their preschool program, and they will be in...
Right above us.
Oh, well, that would make sense, the preschool area, okay. Next is before and after care, Amber at the back. Yay, Amber! Amber is with Prodigy, um, and Prodigy, she'll talk a little bit about, um, all the details, um, possible pricing, um, but we're working on contracts with them as well. So again, with all of these people that you're talking with, remember the grace that you're giving me, give them the grace too, because a lot of this, we will have solidified by May 1st, but we're still in the process of some things that are still being developed, because we're building that plane that you came in...
No.
Bluetooth.
No. We're... We're building that plane that you're sitting on right now, right? That you came in and were like, "Wow, this store just gonna actually shut the door, and we're gonna start flying." So, we're building that plane still, and that's part of being a part of a new charter, is that there's so much fun in that. Um, so, curriculum, we have Cassie here, Cassie? Yay, Cassie! Just, please don't do math like you did with me, no, I'm kidding. She'll, she had, she did math with me the other day, and I am so glad we have Singapore Math, and yeah, she's like, like, blew my head away. I was like, "Gosh, I really thought I knew math better than that, and I was doing first grade math." I didn't understand, no, I'm kidding, so, I'm really not. Um, but Cassie's gonna be there to answer questions about Singapore Math, and we'll, um, Jen will be there to answer questions about Core Knowledge, because she was, oh, she was a teacher for 12 years in Core Knowledge, so we'll be talking a little bit about that in CKLA, will be talked about in literacy with Holly, who will be in here. Um, preschool will be in the multipurpose room, right? I'm sorry. Preschool is upstairs, before and after care is in the multipurpose room, right over here. Um, curriculum is now in...
So curriculum, so preschool is above us, and then, curriculum is like one major door down, okay? So it'll be kind of in the middle of that. And then SPED is all the way towards...
And then SPED, or, or Resource, or Special Education, will be all the way down at the end of this upstairs, and we don't have anything on that side of the building.
Yeah, we made this last night, thinking that these were gonna be open, so disregard this, because everything changes day to day, here at New Summit right now.
Can you announce what sessions will be on?
So, the sessions that we will have, again, is preschool, before and after care, school care, curriculum, special education, and literacy, but on Facebook Live, it will first be preschool, right? Second will be before and after care, um, school care, and then special education will be third, because my fearless communications lady is going to be in Facebook Live in those rooms. It's 20 minutes each, the leaders of those groups will be hard stop, don't linger and ask them questions, because other people will be coming in to then do that rotation. Okay? And as soon as we're done at 8 o'clock, really, you're done, so you have the flexibility